Not necessarily.
Welcome to the April 14, 2025 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Vargo, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear God, we come before you today with hearts filled with gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community. Thank you for the gift of leadership and for the trust you placed in each of us. Grant us wisdom in our decisions, compassion in our deliberation, and unity in our purpose. May we always be mindful of all those we represent, especially the most vulnerable, and continue to bless our incredible Sandusky Blue Streak basketball team. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Myers, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Bajali?
Here.
Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Vargo?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of March 24, 2025. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wadding.
I move that we accept the March 24 minutes as presented.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection. That motion is approved, and those minutes are approved. Folks, tonight, we are honored to have the Sandusky High School varsity basketball team and their coaches with us today. I want to note that their athletic director, Mr. Kamel, is in the audience, and so is our friend, Mrs. Murray's in the audience, also the president of the Sandusky School Board. And welcome to the team and to the coaches. Thank you for joining us, and thanks for providing our community with such a spectacular season and a great run in your state tournament. You know, sports are one of those things that can bind and unite a city together. Your team and your season certainly did that throughout our entire community. We're proud of each and every one of you, and we're honored to provide this proclamation to memorialize this season for the next 100 years, we hope. I'm going to dispense with the "whereas's" because that gets a little boring and sometimes doesn't make sense, so I hope you'll bear with me. Sandusky schools have over 3,500 students, creating a diverse population and a district rich in pride, tradition, and excellence. The Sandusky High School varsity basketball team, under the direction of Coach Damar Moore, has finished the 2024 and the 2025 season with a 19-8 overall record and a 9-1 conference record. The team earned their fourth consecutive SBC Lake Division Championship and their fourth consecutive sectional championship. The team pressed on to win the Ohio High School Athletic Association Northwest Division III District Championship. This Sandusky High basketball team secured the first-ever regional win, the first-ever regional championship, and the first-ever state Final Four appearance in the school's history. I, Richard Brady, President of the City Commission, do hereby urge all citizens in our community to pay tribute to honoring this outstanding team for their hard work and their dedication. Dated this 14th day of April 2025, we're proud of each and every one of you. Now, for the history books, we would indulge you and ask you all to step forward and get a picture with our commission, suitable for framing, we hope.
Oh, my word. Oh, my word.
We're all going to stand up, and they're going to stand.
Okay.
We're going to stand, and they're going to stand.
It's a good thing, because they're all.
Good thing we got a head start.
Where are you going?
What, are we like 12 inches taller?
Hi, Darby.
How are you, baby?
Hi, sweetheart. Great to see you.
Congrats.
Way to go.
Love watching.
Congratulations.
I like to congratulate.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well done, Mr. Ed.
Congratulations. It was so awesome.
We're going to need a ladder.
Can we get you to hang on to the proclamation?
There you go.
Yep. There you go.
I'll go over here.
We'll look between people's heads here.
All right, I think I can see everybody. All right, one, two, and three. I'll do one more. One, two, and three. Perfect.
Outstanding.
Frame that. Put that in your office.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Well done.
Take it easy, man.
The best part about this is they don't have to stay for the whole meeting. Right.
Just the athletic director.
I might slip out with Martha.
Yeah, you can leave with your wife. Well, it's all downhill from here. Now back to business. Okay. Onward. Audience participation. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda items, please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your agenda item comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim Schwang, Sheffield Way. I have three questions on the agenda. First one is Item F, and that's the chip partnership with Erie County. Can we get an explanation of what those funds are going to be used for specifically or different programs it may be used for? Item, item number one, which is the new firefighter contract, if we could get an update of what the last contract said and what's new in the new contract. Hopefully, we've kept the same amount of firefighters or added firefighters from the last contract. And the last item is Item 8, which is the $207,000 bridge that we're putting across Mills Golf Course. I'm just curious whether or not the rec. department looked into the possibility of using tractor-trailer rig beds to do that. I know I play a lot of golf at Wasickett, which is a private course, of course, more expensive than Mills Golf Course, and I'm just curious whether, and that they use those there, the truck beds for bridges. And I'm just wondering to see if we research that, maybe we could, you know, cut this down from $207,000. I know that I've looked online that there's truck beds that are for sale for like $1,200, and they're 58 feet long. I don't know how long this bridge is going to be. Maybe that's why we can't go with the truck bed frame. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwang. Any additional residents with items that are on the agenda? Not commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
Second.
It's been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that is, motion is approved. Commissioners, we have 10 items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, new liquor license for Ohio Beverage LLC. Item B, new liquor license for Soul Venice LLC. Item C, approval of 2024 replacement pages for the codified ordinances. Item D, approval of payment to Retsal and Andrus LPS for professional services. Item E, approval of Welcome Home Ohio purchase and sale contracts. Item F, approval of chip partnership agreement with Erie County. Item G, approval of agreement with Amtrak for ADA upgrades. Item H, approval of agreement for Wonderware Support and Maintenance, 2025 through 2026. Item I, approval to purchase asphalt from Erie Materials for pavement repairs. Item J, permission to submit an ODPS grant application for summer holiday enforcement program.
Commissioners, having heard these liquor license hearing requests and ordinances, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vargo.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda items A through J, and declaring that all ordinances and resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission shall take effect in accordance with sections reflected in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second discussion. I wonder, Mr. Orzak, if you or someone can respond to the question regarding Item F, which was a question regarding what the dollars in the chip grant are going to be spent on.
Ms. Gilson, Ken.
I'm happy to answer that question. This is the allocation and the partnership that is with multi-jurisdictions that applies for dollars to be applied towards home repair assistance that's run through GL cap. They're chip dollars, they're home dollars through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Unfortunately, there is a very large waiting list, and I think it's important to note that, that is currently in place with GL cap, but this is the portion that provides $350,000 to City of Sandusky homeowners.
Thank you, Ms. Gilson. We have benefited through this program oftentimes over the years, I believe, I recall. Thank you. Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the liquor license hearings and ordinances.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Those liquor license request, hearing requests and ordinances are approved. Ms. Myers, will you present Item Number 1 of the regular agenda?
It is requested an ordinance be passed ratifying, accepting, and approving a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sandusky and Ohio Charter Municipal Corporation and the International Association of Firefighters Local 327, the collective bargaining unit for certain employees of the Sandusky Fire Department for the period January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027, a copy of which is attached to this ordinance, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wadding.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Orzak, I don't expect you to recite that contract verbatim. I had trouble reading the 75 pages it included, but perhaps you could just touch on the high points, percentage of increase, and the number of firemen that we will continue to have.
So, the fireman's contract, the number of firemen has not changed as the award last time. The percentage of increase in wages are 5, 5, and 5, and the other stuff was minor changes in the contract. That's about the highlight of what the collective bargaining agreement came out to this time.
Thank you, Mr. Orzak. That's the kind of reading that will put you to sleep if you do that at night. Additional discussion, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present Item Number 2, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving the naming of the curve between West Perkins Avenue and Sanford Street, Beckling's Bend, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Move for approval of this ordinance under Item 2, under suspension of the rules and in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second discussion. I see that Mr. Beakley and his wife are in the room, and Mr. Beakley has provided me with this idea, is actually the author of this idea. Mr. Beakley, if you'd like to share with us any comments, we're moving through this step by step. It was a little painful kidding here, there were a lot of teases across at items.
We had a lot of winter, too.
That's true.
We were going to do it in May.
Yeah, and I think what you're talking about is the dedication.
Right.
We are looking forward to doing, making a semi-big deal out of that with a sign. Our street departments will provide a sign.
We don't know this, but the curve around Mills Creek has never been named.
Right.
It is tonight being named. Thank you, Mr. Beakley, for the suggestion, and thank you for your patience. Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed.
Mr. President.
Mr. Beakley, you do not have to sit through the next two hours of this meeting.
I'm not either.
Okay. I'll let you get out of here, and thank you and your wife for both coming.
John, I was trying to get your attention.
John.
If I could just interrupt one quick second. We have one of the home purchasers from our Welcome Ohio program here, and just wanted to give her an opportunity to recognize her for, she's extremely excited.
That was the consent agenda item?
Yeah.
My mistake, I will break it. One of the few powers I have as the commission president, I can rearrange the agenda, so I'm rearranging it for you to step to the podium and let us acknowledge you.
She actually didn't necessarily, oh, she's coming, she's coming. I do want to take a moment to acknowledge Hannah Smith, one of our very first buyers. She'll be receiving one of the homes on Pierce Street and has been an absolute pleasure to work with. She's been very, very patient. She can tell you a little bit about herself, but apropos to having the basketball team here, she does work for Sandusky City Schools.
Excellent. We're pleased you're here, and we're pleased you're doing this.
Yep. Yeah, so I am Hannah Smith. I do have three littles in the Sandusky School, so staying in Sandusky is a big thing to do, and of course, there's no affordable housing here, so this is really awesome that I'm one of the first people, so I'm super excited.
What a great story.
Yeah.
Thanks for investing in our city.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Orzak.
Don't get too excited about your power, the rest of us have the ability to take that away.
And that power is fleeting, I know that.
Five, four to three, we could rearrange the agenda underneath here.
Seventeen more minutes. Seventeen more meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, during my time on the Charter Review Committee, you do have the power to declare martial law, correct?
That's true, and take over the police department, and that is frightening.
Oh, boy. For the record.
Hope the Charter Review is looking at that.
I'll author that revision. Oh, boy. There we go. Mr. Crable?
I just want to say I'm really thrilled to see this program flourishing, or beginning to flourish, and I just hope that this is just a small beginning, and we can, you know, really help a lot of families and, at the same time, help the community as a whole. So, congratulations.
And on a serious note, this is really tangible now. There are six foundations in six different locations in the city that, in the next 30 days, you're going to be able to go and see a backhoe on the ground digging and building homes, and we are so blessed to, we've gone so many years without a home being built in the city, now we've got a few coming. Good thing. Thanks for doing this.
Great stuff.
Ms. Myers, will you present Item Number 3, please?
Three, Item 1. It is requested a resolution be passed accepting and approving the City of Sandusky Tax Incentive Review Council, TIRC, recommendations regarding current tax agreements, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wadding.
I move for the adoption of this resolution, 31, under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present Item Number 3, ordinance number 2?
It is requested an ordinance be passed repealing ordinance number 19-216, passed on December 9, 2019, authorizing and directing the city manager to cancel the Enterprise Zone Agreement with Market Street Collective LLC relating to property located at 317 East Washington Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Mr. Murray, go ahead.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just for the public's knowledge, this is the Cardinal Crimis Grocery site, and we've not had a lot of good cooperation from those folks, so it's past time to revoke that. And just a comment generally about the Turk process, it does get, with Colleen Gilson's assistance, it gets a pretty rigorous review in terms of what we're doing with TIFs and tax abatement, and it's a pretty thorough discussion about that, and I'm very much appreciative of that, like the public to know that that scrutiny does occur, and this is part of that. And I think, to those of you who will continue on in the commission in future years, thankfully, I'll be at home, and I won't be watching them on TV. Keep an eye on what's going on with BGSU Building. It's becoming something other than what it was represented to us originally, too much transient rental there, and I know staff's looking at that, but something to keep an eye on.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on that ordinance, please?
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present Item Number 4, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a new 2024 Avent 760 GT cab loader through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program from KTS Equipment LLC of Wilmington, Ohio, for the forestry division, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
John.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present Item Number 5?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Village of Kelly's Island, Ohio, for the review of plans, specifications, and providing of building inspection services to establish and maintain building department services for commercial, residential, and public buildings at Kelly's Island, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Vargo.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
It looks like you're looking for someone to say something about this.
This is a great cooperative effort that's been discussed for quite a few years between Kelly's Island and the City of Sandusky. This will be a net revenue maker for the City of Sandusky, and we don't think this should detract at all from the services that we're already providing. Mr. Orzak, I'm going to commend you and the staff for continuing to pursue this. This is a good thing for both communities.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
I'm making you happy.
It did, I like that. Ms. Myers, will you please pull the commission on that motion?
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present Item Number 6, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Ed Burdu and Company LLC of Sandusky, Ohio, for the demolition of 1528 Columbus Avenue Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Crable.
I move approval of the ordinance under Item 6 in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Ed Burdu and Company LLC of Sandusky, Ohio, for the demolition of 1528 Columbus Avenue Project, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crable.
I move approval of the ordinance under item six in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I believe every commissioner up here said cause on this property. I've had several, especially at the golf course of all places, Mr. Fogg that used to be on WAC, when's it coming down? I'm sure former city manager Mike Will will be thrilled.
Yes.
It's gone too, so.
The neighbors will be thrilled as well.
Yep. It's private party.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Fargo.
Do we even understanding, some of the neighbors are unsure, you know, with the garage behind, which has been a little bit of the nuisance issue, does that come down as well, or will that remain?
Mr. Orzak, I think I know the answer to that, but it'd be more appropriate for you to share that answer.
So the residence itself was under the order for demolition. The garage portion of that is not, so we have to maintain services to the garage area. There's an apartment dwelling above the garage. The chief of police is aware of the situation, and the clearing of the house will eliminate the area a lot better, so.
Does give us a lot better view of that residence, or you call it a garage, I call it a two-unit apartment complex, and it gives us a lot better view of that from the street, I believe, for our police officers.
That's correct.
I have a question, I don't know if it's directed to you, Mr. Orzak, or Mr. Klein. I'm thrilled that we've gotten this far. It's only taken us about 20 years to get here. But the question I have for you is, how soon, how soon will this come down? Do we have a timeline?
We do not have one yet, but we will schedule a pre-construction meeting quickly and get it down as fast as we can. We'll certainly give you an update on the manager's report as soon as we get a timeline.
The contractor that we're awarding it to is excellent, and I can tell you, once he starts, get out of the way, it'll come down.
I'll just add that through Mr. Klein's office, Megan Stuckey's worked with all of the Columbia Gas and Ohio Edison and everybody, so everybody's on board and knows what needs to happen, so we'll be ready to go when they're ready.
Thanks. Thanks for staying the course on this. Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington. Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number seven.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with ABA demolition of Norwalk, Ohio, for the 2025 demolition project number one, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Move for adoption of this ordinance under item seven in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
For the public's sake, yes, Mr. Chairman, sorry, for the public's sake, could someone explain what project number one is? Why is there not an address associated with it, or a name, or something?
I'm happy to address that. Project number one refers to the usage of CDBG dollars, so it's the first one of this year under CDBG dollars. The prior one is being demolished through different source of funds. That's why it's not in this one. And this is for the structures at 717 Warren Street, 1224 Severs Way, and 530 Lockwood.
Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on that motion.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington. Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Ms. Fargo. Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number eight, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Mills Creek Golf Course Bridge Replacement Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
This is, I think, our second, you know, Mr. Worthington, the crowd, our second year now where we haven't had that bridge that's been out, and maybe Mr. Klein's wanted to ask if, because I'll get heat at the golf course, you know that, in the next few days. It's bid it out, I get all that. Is it possible it could be done, middle of summer, Christmas, or, you know, is there any?
I would be looking at probably late fall at the earliest. By the time this gets bid out and then awarded, you're talking June when it goes through submittal packages, then the contractor will order the materials. Steel right now has a relatively long lead time, so that could be three to four, five, six months, who knows? So I'm assuming that this is going to be somewhere in the October, November, December timeframe at the earliest.
My follow-up question is, we had a wooden bridge there for years on five, that the, you know, carts and walkers, and we used that over and over. Was there some reason that we switched to this? Because we still got access for the machinery on six at the creek, about 40 meters away.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the type of bridge that was there previously?
We had the wood bridges out there, okay? It's been there for years, same thing on six. Now we're going to the super $200,000 bridge. Is that going to be extended further out? What's the reasoning behind it?
It's at least a 60-foot span, and it is more robust than what was there before. The thought was that that's our first line of defense as Mills Creek comes through the property under the Perkins Ave, well, near Beckling Bend, we're going to call it Beckling Bend, under there. The, that's our first line of defense for when the creek gets that high and it gets moving pretty good through that area. I think there was a question of Wasickett has some tractor-trailer bridges. That was an option that we met with our regular, some of our regular members at the end of last year, and they had brought up, you know, why aren't we using the same that they use at Wasickett? I can't speak to how fast and how high the water gets for Pipe Creek, but we know that we had a tree hit that bridge at five, and this was the engineered option to make that stronger.
And then the follow-up, for that water to flow through there back along six, if you go back in that creek area, I've walked that quite a bit, back through there to come up on seven or six green, do we, once or twice a year, can we go in and clean that out? It's like a ditch being filled with wood and trees falling over. That causes a lot of the flooding right there.
We do have planned maintenance for that once we get the season.
When's that going to occur? Is that going to be?
When we, I know we have something under six right now, and once we can get a truck back there to pull some of that out, it's just a matter of getting, having the ground dry enough to get back in there.
All right. I'll let you be the bearer of bad news.
Mr. Klein, there was a question regarding, it's probably more appropriate for Mr. Klein and not for you, Mr. Worthing. You had, we had a question regarding using a trailer bed for a bridge. Is engineering a view, is the span not appropriate for that, or how many bridges have you designed using trailer beds?
I have not designed any using a trailer or using truck. I guess it was looked at. I don't know the configuration, if they were in sequence and the water would flow through them, or if they were sideways and they removed the walls on them. I'm not sure exactly what they look like, but it sounds like the engineer looked at that and decided it wasn't the best approach.
The span is at least 60 feet, and I think Mr. Schwanger had mentioned 58 feet was as long as the trailer beds got, so maybe that just narrowed it down right there.
That's two feet they can just jump over, I guess. Okay, thanks. That's good enough for me.
Mr. Chairman.
Additional comments, Mr. Murray.
Yeah, I had the same thought originally, is why can't we use railroad ties and some plywood? I've seen that done in other places, but a 60-foot span, that's not going to work, and not with that torrent of water. That's just too much force for anything to hold up. But I will take an opportunity, as much as I do support Mills Creek, and I do, and I'm glad we own it, we've taken some steps in the last year to secure its future, because as many people know, we owned only about half the golf course. We rented it from the diocese of Toledo, wrested it from the diocese of Toledo at ever spiraling rental prices. So we've taken a lot of steps, and I'm proud of that, and I'm proud of Mills Golf Course. But, and this is a but, when we take a look at the accounting for Mills Golf Course, the government does a funny thing, and this isn't really directed at you, Ms. Reader, we've done this the same way for a long period of time. We take a look at the revenue, and we take a look at the expenses, and we never, ever amortize the capital expenses. If we're ever going to get an accurate picture of Mills, we need to amortize the capital expenses. That's the end of my comments.
Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pajali.
Before we lead this discussion, can we maybe encourage staff in the future, if we run into another bridge replacement, to look into the truck bed possibility?
Absolutely.
Because that may be something we can use down the road, and if it fits, it might be, save us a lot of money. So I would just encourage you in the future to look into that possibility.
Excellent. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Mr. Crable.
Yeah, I would just note that the flatbed trailer deck that was mentioned before, they're, I think they're typically pre-stressed. In other words, they have a hump in them, so they are a pretty stable structure. But again, they're not applicable in every case, and if they're not long enough, they're just not long enough, there's no truck bed structure that's available, so.
Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yep.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington. Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
The resolution has passed. Ms. Myers, you present our last item, item number nine.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into amendment to the license agreement with Sandusky Central Catholic School for priority use of certain fields located at Dorn Community Park for the Sandusky Central Catholic High School baseball and softball programs, March 1st through May 31st, beginning March 1st, 2023 through May 31st, 2025. I'm sorry, that probably should not be 2023, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to section fourteen of the city's charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crable.
I questioned those dates as well, and I don't know if we're simply, by passing this ordinance, we're approving something that's already been in place for two years, or are we doing something proactively for the future? And I'm not, it doesn't say, although it suggests that this is.
Is it a type of, an amendment?
Mr. Worthing, perhaps you can tell us if this is a typographical error, or where we really are with this piece of legislation?
It should be for the dates that they currently have for their agreement. They were using these two fields that we, as part of their Panther softball program, and we didn't realize that they were additionally using those fields, so this is to put those into this agreement, and then as we moved into a next agreement, it would be included in that.
So this simply adds the fields they're using into.
For priority use, correct.
For prior and current use, not future.
Correct. There'll be a new agreement once they're current agreement.
When this expires. Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington. Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington. Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. That concludes the regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
I have quite a few donations. The first three are for the Sandusky Fire Department. They would like to thank Six Flags Entertainment Corporation for a donation of $10,000 made in the memory of Craig Kucinich. Craig, Six Flags Entertainment Corporation has asked that this donation be used to purchase equipment or training that will allow Sandusky first responders to continue providing quality emergency care to those in need. Second one, from Lee Simmons, a donation of $500 in Mr. Kucinich's name. And the third one is Aubrey Marcota, a donation of $200 in the memory of Mr. Kucinich. I Googled him just because I didn't know the name, and he was an employee of Six Flags. He was in the accounting office. He had a medical emergency at his residence and passed away, and the obituary said that the family would like any donations to be made to their local police, or, sorry, the local fire departments or EMS services where they reside, so I'm assuming that's why all the donations are made, so.
Can I have a motion to accept those donations?
Some moves.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved with our thanks for that, those very significant dollars.
Yep. Allison and Mike Will of San Marino Development Company for their in-kind donation exceeding $2,275 for 15 trees and planting materials to be planted in the tree lawns throughout the city. Can I motion to accept that donation?
So move.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved with our thanks to the Will's.
Sandusky Rec would like to thank Sandusky High School Gentlemen's Club and Leading Ladies for their help in stuffing over 2,500 eggs for their, this year's downtown Easter egg hunt. The next one is an award of $5,000 grant from Shores and Islands, Ohio, for the sixth annual Dragons and Bacon Fest. Shores and Islands, Ohio, has continued to be a Dragons and Bacon Fest partner since the inception of the event, and this year's grant is key to bringing back the event to the paper arena, if I can get a motion to accept that donation.
So move.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that's approved with our thanks.
Sandusky Rec has received a grant of 160 helmets after applying for the annual Put a Lid on It Bike Helmet Safety Program for 2025 with the Ohio Department of Transportation. Helmets will be picked up on May 5th and distributed to children and families this summer who participate in the annual touch truck event on August 5th, and/or the Whitman Weber Safety Town Program, which is August 11th to the 14th. And then, Sandusky Rec received a donation of $5,000 from Erie Blacktop to pay for paint and repairs to the press box at Erie Blacktop Field at the Amets Facility in the city. Repairs and improvements will be made in the 2025 season if we get a motion to accept that donation.
So move.
Motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion is approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
Finance, the deadline to file 2024 municipal income tax returns is April 15th, 2025. All individuals and businesses can utilize the regional income tax agency's website at www.ritaohio.com to file their taxes. Public Works, work will begin this week to install storm sewers and water lines along Cleveland Road between Heminger Ditch and Shoreway Drive to accommodate the Sandusky Bay Pathway Project. The Division of Forestry will be honoring Arbor Day with a tree planting ceremony and hands-on demonstration at the Sandusky Public Library on Friday, April 25th, at 10:00 a.m. All are welcome to attend. For more information, please refer to city social media or contact 419-627-5884. Water crews will commence flushing fire hydrants next week. Periodic flushing of water mains is required to ensure high-quality potable water. Crews will move through zones in consecutive order, starting with Zone One. Takes approximately one week to complete each zone. For questions, contact the water plant at 419-627-5805. The asphalt plants are now open for the 2025 season, as evidenced out in our front yard. All are encouraged to report street issues, including potholes, dead animals, by calling 419-627-5829, or visiting www.cityofsandusky.com/report. And then the spring yard waste drop-off day has been scheduled for Saturday, April 26th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and Sunday, April 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Barnes Composting Center, 1630 Camp Road hereon. This is a free-to-city residence for residential waste only. Proof of residency, a driver's license must be presented. Concludes my report for the evening. I'll take any questions here.
Comments or questions for the city manager, Commissioners?
Could you confirm?
Mr. Crable.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Could you confirm on the 20th Arbor Day celebration, is it at 10 or 11?
This says 10 here, but I don't know. Do you know her?
I can look real quick. I don't off the top of my head. I'm sorry, I had written it down previously as 11, so that's why I'm asking.
Anybody know when Arbor Day is?
Well, the question is, when is the tree planting ceremony? I had it down at 10 in my calendar, so.
10, it's 10 o'clock.
10 is the date. It is. Good. Thank you. Additional questions for the city manager? If not, we'll move to items of old business. Any items of old business, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington.
A couple of things here that I had, I'm glad that, I talked to Colleen prior to the meeting, and the city manager today about the Pollinator Gardens, and then you signed for the mayor's. Mr. Murray, that's probably been, what, eight, nine years ago we did that? We initiated that? It's a, and how important they are. A lot of people don't realize the food chain, you know, from the Monarchs, and they're really drumming quick, so I'm glad we're doing that. The second thing is the Pipe Creek pathway. At some point, I know I've asked the last couple of years, that needs to be more stone put down, reinforce that pathway, because it's basically getting washed out. Walking from the canoe livery back to the cell, I'm not talking about doing the whole back, just that area where we walk, I've got a couple of people I've been talking to about possibly cleaning up, cut some of the brush down in that, because we can just throw that right in the wood of there. We've done that in the past, so I'm going to be looking at possibly doing that and helping out.
Yeah, I sent you an extensive response on what we're going to do there, so, on an email later, late this afternoon, so.
Do you have it on the schedule?
It's on the schedule, yep.
Good. Great. Thank you. Additional items of old business? Items of new business? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chair, really quickly, though I know this is generally what we do, but I just recently learned, and I think John did too, I just talked about him, that Marcus Harris has accepted a new position, and I felt compelled to speak about him, because I've had the opportunity to work with him on the Community Relations Commission, and anybody else that I have the opportunity to work with in the city who's been doing good work, I plan to always acknowledge, not to disparage anybody else, but I just wanted to wish him well, and also to acknowledge that he was always professional with me, he was always one who kept those meetings moving forward, and I really appreciate him and I wish him well.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. Additional items of new business? If not, I suppose you're going to insist that I have public comments too, aren't you? Any public comments on any item that pertains to city business?
Mr. President, is that a yes, that you're going to have public comments?
I've instigated, I've instigated that yes.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, Sandusky. I spend a lot of time out in the community, of course, you know, on social media as well, and I'm hearing some concerns that there's not enough updates on a couple of projects coming from this table, and one of them is the recreation center update. Maybe once a month we can get an update, or getting close, an update in two weeks. The other issue is the state theater update. Now, I don't know if we have given them any money, if they have any of our money in hand. Somebody tells me they already have $500,000 of ours in hand, but maybe updates on the state theater once in a while would be a great idea. The third issue is, I'm sure you've all noticed that all the corners downtown that are fairly new, the curbs on the corners, a lot of them had the curbing put in place, but now we're seeing where we're going back and removing the actual curb and putting in, just grinding it down and making it a slope down to the street, which is supposed to, I guess, prevent people from driving over the curbs, but on the other hand, it kind of causes a safety concern for pedestrians. If I'm standing there close to where I'm supposed to be, and one of our downtown delivery trucks, or a fire truck, or even an ambulance comes around the corner and I don't see them or hear them, I might be a dead man. Okay? So, don't quite understand, I mean, I understand we're trying to slow down traffic, I get it, but on the flip side, you're also causing a dangerous situation for pedestrians, and I can't think of any other community, of course, I don't get down to Columbus, Cincinnati, all those big cities, where some of these ideas are coming from, but who in their right mind would design a corner where it's designed for vehicles to go over that corner instead of on the street? Don't understand it. It's, it's, this is the kind of things that drives a community nuts, and I don't know if you guys hear from those, from people or not. I know there's not a lot of people that come down here, because a lot of people are shy or they don't, they figure, you know, what's the government going to do?